Big Walnut Schools to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. And I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeremy, if you would please.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Here.
Mr. Fuji.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
And Mr. Crowe is unable to be with us.
Thank you, Jeremy. Bring this up to superintendent's report.
All right. Just a quick note there under seven point one. Mentioned this in my update, but wanted to share, make sure you all saw, starting a new program. It's an idea that I got out of a professional journal called Eagle Ambassador. I had for this first cohort, our administrators nominate people that were really involved in their buildings or in the community. And just starting, it'll be four sessions where we kind of do a dive into each of our four district goals with them. Just kind of educate and also get some feedback from them on those goals. And it's something, if it goes well, that I'd like to continue each year with a different cohort of people with the idea being that you just kind of are in the background, really giving different groups a deep look into the district beyond what they would typically get. So excited to see how that goes. We'll be doing the academic goal tonight and Jen will be helping me with that. So let me share that. And then that takes us to, I see we have Mr. Lamb. Is Mr. Delli with you today or just you today?
It's just me.
Okay. Do want to introduce, I had shared with the board, Mr. Bob Lamb, who is the Economic Development Director for Delaware County is here today. And as we were chatting about some things going on, it kind of came to our realization that the board's changed over a lot since he's been in. And so we thought it would be a good time just to kind of get him in front of you so you get to know who he is. He gets a chance to meet all of you. And he just wanted to share kind of some things going on in general with economic development so that as things come up, you know who he is and we're not kind of starting at ground zero. So with that, you're welcome to step up to the podium there, Bob.
Mask on or off? For commissioners, we have to take them off when talking. Do you?
It's easier for you to talk where you're at, but go for it.
Okay. Just wasn't sure because we record, so we have to take our mask off when we.
I'm vaccinated, so we're six feet apart.
And I do apologize for walking in after you started. I drove right past was on the way to the high school, was two lights down when I realized, oh yeah, gotta turn around. So I do apologize for that. I'm Bob Lamb. I'm the Economic Development Director for the county. My office serves the county commissioners, the Delaware County Finance Authority, and we are doing some work with the land bank as well that the county commissioners established a few years ago, trying to formalize that process right now and make it a more active entity within the community so that we can move some properties that have been sitting for ten or years or so more in tax delinquency to a return to a usable stance. And that's what land banks are. Not the main point I'm here today, but you're going to be hearing a lot about that over the next few months in the community as we tee that up and move some processes forward. So if you do have questions, especially since there are properties within the Big Walnut School District area, please don't hesitate to reach out to my office. We are always happy to talk about new initiatives that are going on. As the superintendent said, I'm really here today just to introduce myself. I'll let you know a little bit about what we're doing and if there's questions you have to answer them. We value the school districts immensely within our community. We believe one of the key reasons we continue to grow as a county. We're currently at about 220,000. Morpsy has us hitting 300,000 over the next 20 to 30 years based upon the state or morpsy numbers that you look at. So that is meaning a lot more growth. We think a lot of that growth is being driven by the school districts in our community. The school districts are phenomenal. And when you look at where to move a family to raise them for a high quality of life, good education and ability to access a lot of the job opportunities within central Ohio, Delaware County is a premier community for those items. And so we expect to continue to see that growth occur. We are trying to position the community to be able to address that growth since there's limitations in how many of the townships municipalities in the county can control or limit that type of growth, even with different zoning policies or infrastructure policies that can be implemented. We've seen that especially over the last six months. The Supreme Court and other entities have continuously extended the rights of the property owners, both good and challenging items when you do that. And we appreciate where they stand. We want to see property owners be able to use their land to the best of their rights. But that does mean that we have to work to address infrastructure issues that arise as you put more individuals on the roads, as you put more strain on water systems, on sewer systems, electric, gas. All of those items are things that we need to be working with our utility providers, our county engineer's office and others to properly address. And so we are trying to do that. At the same time, we're trying to look at ways that we can work with landowners, townships and municipalities to reposition land away from previous agricultural uses or solely agricultural uses. And the reason for that is when we look around the community, what we see is land that has been left to be agricultural for the most part is transitioning, especially in areas around thirty-six, thirty-seven and south of the county to a single-family development type use. And though we love our single-family developers, we appreciate the investments they make in our community and we like to see the community grow. Those types of developments do not normally cover the costs that they create for the local community, whether to the school district, to the county, to the fire services that are needed. All of those things cost money. And so we are working to try to find ways to position that land, not to develop solely a single family, but to encourage the commercial developers, like industrial developers, office developers, to make their investments here in our community so that we can diversify our tax base. When you look at our school districts, they are predominantly, in some cases ninety-two percent or higher funded by single-family homes. That creates challenges for the school districts and for other entities because it means when you need to look at additional revenue, that entire burden is falling on your constituents, the parents who are putting kids into the school district, the single-family homeowners. And so how do we take policies and enact them to help diminish that or at least diversify that cost? And in order to do so, we've been working very closely with the different townships and municipalities to implement zoning policies that encourage that commercial growth. At times that commercial growth includes multifamily, light industrial, office and other uses, some of which do create other concerns for school districts. We are aware of that. We try to work closely with those providers, whether it's school districts, sheriff's office, EMS, fire, all of those entities to make sure we are trying to manage that growth as best as possible and diversify that tax base. The recent two projects that we've undertaken in that endeavor is a twenty-three corridor overlay. Happy to let everyone know there are five new projects that are moving forward in that overlay area because of the overlay zoning. Two of them are office projects. One is a Sheetz gas station. The other two are multifamily projects. And then the additional one is thirty-six, thirty-seven, the Berlin Business Park, which repositioned approximately eighteen hundred acres for commercial development. Of that, about twelve hundred acres that is earmarked for commercial oriented growth. So office, neighborhood, retail, light industrial type uses. The other six hundred acres divided about equally is looking at multifamily development and then more of the Epcun empty nester type development. Again, when we look at that residential more nature, our main goal is to shift it away from the traditional single-family home status, not to eliminate completely the residential status from it. And the reason for that for us is housing diversification is an issue that we face within the community, trying to provide different options for individuals to be able to continue to live in the community as they look to downsize is a challenge within Delaware County. We are seeing more of the empty nester product come online, especially being driven, as I mentioned earlier, by Epcun. But it is still a limited option within the county when you look at housing overall. And then on the multifamily side, we do have individuals that are trying to live within the community that can't afford a single-family home. Homeownership is a challenge within Delaware County. Our entry level is about three hundred and seventy-five to four hundred thousand right now. Again, it's a good challenge to have as a community where a lot of counties are struggling to get housing development to occur. We're seeing that being pushed very drastically forward within our community. But we do want to be cognizant of trying to diversify that housing when we are able to and when it's appropriate and when it's supported by the local jurisdiction who has to approve the zoning of that endeavor. So that is really how we're addressing it right now. We are looking at ways in which we can maximize infrastructure investment right now. My office is working with the county treasurer's office. We are trying to position approximately fifty million dollars to be repositioned for bond funds to be issued to both local government entities that are seeking to do infrastructure improvements or construct public safety or public amenity type needs within their community and offering that bond fund as a way in which to do those projects at a lower interest rate to help them preserve taxpayer dollars and reposition it for other needs, but be able to still bring these amenities or these infrastructure needs online. And then additionally, working with private developers on the commercial side to construct more infrastructure, roads, sewers and other type of infrastructure needs where it's appropriate, namely where is it going to serve an existing need within the community? So a choke point on a roadway connection? Or where it could be positioned to expand additional land for a commercial development potential? So these are the different ways in which we're trying to address some of the concerns that our communities face, knowing the burden that continued growth places on school districts, fire and other local community needs. This is really the main endeavors that we've gone into. I know I've covered a lot quickly. The other big item that we're rolling out this year is a cellular fiber plan. The intent is to make sure that as we grow as a community, we're going to be able to meet the five G needs in the future. That's going to be a critical item as important as roads or sewers to growth. As a school district, you have had to navigate the challenges created by COVID. Much, I don't want to say more so, but in a much more intense way, I think, than a lot of entities who are already positioned in some ways for work at home type needs. It was a complete re-altering for the schools to how do you educate from a Zoom? And then from the parent's standpoint, how do you have the infrastructure in place to meet the needs at home to be able to have your child educated at home? And so we think going forward, making sure we have that five G capacity will be critical to remain a premier community. And if we're not a premier community, are people going to continue to invest in the community? If they are not, what does that do to our property tax needs? Where does that leave the local jurisdictions, the school districts and the county as a whole twenty to thirty years from now? And so those are the major items that we've undertaken at this point in time. And to really cap it off, looking at how do we work with local jurisdictions on zoning? How do we leverage commercial for more infrastructure? And what on the fiber cellular side are we doing for the next ten to fifteen years?
Questions for Mr. Lamb?
I got a couple of comments and then one question that I think I know the answer to, but you're probably best to clarify it. So one, I just appreciate you coming in, right? And you know, I see you a lot out with chamber events and the community stuff. And so one of the things I've always appreciated about your perspective is I think when you talk Big Walnut, you really think of it as a Big Walnut community. And I think our group and you are a small group that that's the priority. And what I mean by that is all our municipalities and townships, they have to take care of themselves and they have to act in their own interest, right? And they want to be a part of the community. But sometimes some of those things that they're having to do is kind of choosing one thing that maybe isn't necessarily the best community overall, right? So I appreciate that, at least I feel like there's some support at the county level to get us to consider some of these challenges as community issues, not just necessarily a particular township or a particular village. Recognizing that they all have their own individual problems and challenges to solve too. And you know, good luck to you in figuring out how to help all that work together. But I think the twenty-three overlays is a good example of like those things can't happen, right? You can bring those parties to the table and talk about ways to find, to get those different entities to kind of connect together. I know you're doing some things with the local chamber here right now. So I appreciate all that that you're doing with that. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. The question that I had for you was just, I saw an article yesterday about Morpsy and some of the studies that they are looking at. One of them was the Big Walnut Interchange. And so I had two questions related to that. One is Big Walnut Interchange, separate from Sunbury Parkway, I think. But that's what I wanted to confirm with you, that those are two different projects, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because I know I hear people talk about them in the community and they mix them up. So Big Walnut Interchange is an exit at the Big Walnut Road on I-71. Sunbury Parkway is somewhere a little bit south of thirty-seven and an interchange there. Is that fair statement?
Correct. Big Walnut's approximately four miles north of the Polaris-Gemini Interchange. And then the southern interchange on thirty-six, thirty-seven would be about a mile south of the existing thirty-six, thirty-seven interchange.
Well, I appreciate you saying that because I know those things get thrown around and people get confused by them. So I figured since I saw the Gazette article yesterday and then you were coming, like why not better chance to just kind of clarify that?
No, and thank you for the opportunity. I think something a lot of people don't realize is when you look throughout the state of Ohio, and this is approximation, so, but when you look at different counties throughout the state, when you look at population numbers for those counties, you can pretty much figure there's an interchange for every thirty-five thousand or so people. Well, we have two interchanges, so that would translate to seventy thousand, but we're two hundred and twenty thousand on our way to three hundred thousand. So getting those interchanges added to the community to be able to allow for more traffic flow, not just in the Polaris area, but throughout that whole seventy-one corridor is critical for us.
So related to that then, the Morpsy group. And for those that are following along, that's Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission if you've never heard of what Morpsy is. But could you talk a little bit about kind of how Morpsy works with you all at the county? And then how that extends then? And then the second piece, just in that answer, if you could weave in, how the challenges of school districts play into a study like Morpsy does and the work that Morpsy does and working with you?
Yeah. So the first part of that on how do we work with Morpsy? First, I just like say we're incredibly fortunate to have a group like Morpsy in our region. Not every region has a group like them. Our county commissioners, I believe it's two at a time, are designated to sit on the Morpsy board. And then we also have staff that works with Morpsy directly as well. Our main interaction with them is on the research side and then looking at different studies, whether it's transportation, growth studies, sustainability studies, service studies, and determining how we kind of fit in with that greater regional picture, how we can be supported, how we can support regional activities and how regional activities can support us. So on that side, the other addition to that is Morpsy at times has availability of funding through the federal and state government that are not available directly to county or township entities. So by taking part in those various studies and making sure we are aligned in certain ways with those studies, it opens us up to funding potential through them to be able to meet some community goals. One of the main areas that we leverage this is in the county's trail program. My office also oversees that. But we made sure as Morpsy developed their Ohio Trail Program, we were a part of that conversation that we matched up our trail program with their key areas because now we are able to go to them to secure funding, to expand the trail systems and to connect various trail systems within our community. If we were not aligned with that, that is one way in which we would not be able to apply for funding. So those are the main ways in which we work with them and how it coordinates back to the school district. Again, housing isn't just a local issue to the point that you raised before on we need to be cognizant and making sure we're working with local jurisdictions on their needs. The reality is the majority of our residents don't care where that political line is regarding the road or the sewer. They just care about how do they get where they need to get to and is it smooth and easy? And so we have to be looking at it from a regional standpoint. And that affects housing, job opportunities and growth. And so it's making sure that we understand the needs of the school district as well as the growth that's occurring within the region so that we can be coordinating efforts, whether it's housing or transportation, so that we're maximizing our position as things go forward. We don't want to wake up and find that there's a regional plan that has designated Delaware County as the sole place for single-family home development. We want to make sure we're at the table as the statewide and national concepts are coming about that we're being looked at as a place for commercial growth, light industrial growth so that our residents can not only find a great quality of life here for living and educating their children, but that they can also find job opportunities within the community. One of the things we know is, and this is shown throughout the nation on study after study, the greater the amount of time spent commuting, the less activities one undertakes within their community because less time they have. So if we can be decreasing that commute time, we're allowing parents to be able to be more active in their community or individuals to be more active in their community, whether it's their children or in the religious organizations they're associated with or just nonprofits that serve the community. And all of that spirals to an ability to have more capacity within the community to do more things. We do have the longest commute time in central Ohio, approximately forty-two minutes for our worker, pre-COVID numbers. I will acknowledge that might be a little different today. But again, we're seeing a trend back towards the office. I'm sure many of you saw Amazons announced they're bringing people back. We have many other businesses here that are seeking to be able to bring their people back to the office, if not back to the five-day-a-week, at least some type of structure that would affect individuals when you look at that forty-two-minute commute time. Can we make it a twenty-minute commute time? I don't know. But if we can make sure that forty-two-minute commute time doesn't become fifty-five minutes over the next ten years, that's what we need to be looking at.
I appreciate all that. And I think one of the things that, at least from my seat, that I think you can do to help us most is one of the first things you said, which was that, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, so feel free to shape it if I misstate it, but that the cost of a single-family home doesn't bear itself out to cover the cost of everything infrastructure-wise. And I know that's true in the school districts and I'm sure it's true sewer and you know, down the line a lot of ways. And I think that's one of those messages when we talk to people. I don't know that they fully, not that I say believe it that we're like lying, but like I don't think, they just assume that that is all baked in and that that's part of it, right? And so you know, I think as much as you're trying to advocate for everything big picture-wise, the more we all can share that message that when that house gets built, we're kind of in the hole as a community in terms of the services we have to provide for that from the start would be really helpful because that's a hard message to get through and I'm sure you experienced the same.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, I think going to your point, one of the, I'll steer right back to it, but I think it's just worth saying with how you presented that. One of the great benefits we have in Delaware County is we do have a good conversation happening among our elected officials at all levels on these issues, much better than I've seen in other counties throughout the nation. And so that's something just to thank all of you for being willing to do. I think we're increasing that too as we go, so that's beneficial. But to the point of what you said, it's tough to go to somebody who's paying eight, ten, fifteen thousand dollars or more a year in taxes and tell them, well, hey, the taxes aren't covering the variety of services that you're drawing upon. Because in some cases it might very well be, but we know in the majority that it's not. And so those are tough conversations to have. And it's not that we don't appreciate those individuals paying those taxes, but we do have to be cognizant of where that shortfall is occurring.
I'm hugging all the questions. Does anybody else have anything for Bob?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you very much. And again, my apologies on driving casts.
Don't worry. Thank you. Up next then, we have Doug with his construction update. And I know he has Chris here as well today from VSWC. And I'm not sure if you were starting with that or have other things you need to do. All right. Go ahead, Doug.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I brought Chris Dunfer with me here today. And so there was a document I sent out a couple of days ago. We've talked off and on and we just did fee amendment number one. What we're going to talk about today is what's proposed is fee amendment number two for VSWC architects. Again, this is for the new elementary, new high school and site athletics project. So the document I sent you, I tried to give you kind of the basic story, if you will, and the background. So I'm going to go big picture, as people know me. Those of you, some of the board members weren't here, but the project essentially is based on a story of what's called contract information in the contract. So again, the community voted on and supported a levy that built a, wanted to build a high school for eight hundred and fifty-one students. And that had a cost round of case to it and a size ramifications to it. There were site athletic components as well described in the document and those were incorporated into Chris's scope or VSWC's scope. And then a new elementary, five hundred students, a stipulated size and a stipulated budget. Along with that, the contract speaks about the fact we're going to have a CM at risk. We're going to have one site. We're going to have four GMP packages or bid packages. It's very explicit in terms of how it outlines basically how we get from the day the architect's hired to the final day we get the high school here coming up for the next nine months. Any changes to that contract information, be it schedule, if we had gone to two sites, one for the elementary, one for the high school, increased budget, increased building size, alternative delivery model, if we had said, you know what, we're not going to do a CM at risk, we're going to bid it. Any changes to that contract information can have a direct effect. It's what I call an if-then statement. So what I tried to do is just capture in the contract, what are those if-then statements? And essentially they have language that says, if any of that initial information changes, both parties basically agree to sit down and have a fair and equitable discussion on fee adjustment, schedule adjustment, scope adjustment, whatever the proper ramifications are. So I'm going to stop there for a quick second and basically remind you again, it's kind of an if-then statement. Don't know if you read the document or if you have any questions on that kind of component to start? Okay. So page two, and I'm going to walk through all this and Chris is going to walk us through kind of the, what we'll call Exhibit C here at the end. So on page two, really got into what were the changes in that contract information? Why is fee amendment number two justifiable or a discussion we have to, we should have with the architect? The biggest thing is under item B, changes in discussion, item one, the hard cost, the construction cost. I'll back up for a second or it actually shows it there. Their fee is really based, so how do you come up on the architect's fee? It's typically done, especially in Ohio for public works, not only schools, a percentage of the hard or construction cost. Also though, it looks at the effort, what size of the buildings, is it one site? Everything I disposed of in terms of that contract information. Based on all that, there are a lot of industry standards and accepted kind of plus or minus where you land based on the services, the schedule, the timeframe, et cetera. So that's where, as you can see under item B one, there's actually a little bit higher fee for the elementary. It was rounded out to six point seven five and six point six five for the high school. Generally, the bigger you go, there's some equity or some savings that occurs in effort relations to dollars. Smaller projects actually have a higher percentage. If we'd been half that size, we probably could have approached seven or eight percent, just to share. But the biggest change, as you can see, is the actual cost of the project. The elementary went from just about fourteen-six to seventeen-five million. The high school went from seventy-three million plus to seventy-nine million plus. So we had a fairly significant swing. And so that was talked about all during design, all during contract award. A couple of things, the district, you might say, well, could we have done anything? We did. Remember, we did value engineering, we looked at everything we could to say. But there were certain points at time the district did not want to change. Eighteen hundred and fifty-one kids in the high school, this big of a building. That was a given. We did not change from that. We could have, but we did not. Size of the elementary, never kids. Those stayed fast. So as prices increased, the district, we decided we're not going to shrink or go less than deliverables to the community. So that's one of the reasons the cost went up as well as inflation, market conditions, it had some effect on it. But in a strict adherence to the contract, the starting dialogue would be about five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars would be their potential fee increase. Just look at it in raw numbers. That's all that is, is a starting point. So I just wanted to share, that's probably the most significant on paper and that's actually where Chris started logically. He said, the costs have gone up, I've applied my fee, let's have a dialogue. But that was the first point in time that we had a factor of change in the contract information. The second item, which is on page three or the front of the second full page, if you will, the buildings grew a little bit, not significantly. You'll see under there on item two, the elementary, the elementary actually shrunk a little bit technically. You might recall, this was not part of the original design. We opted to create what's called a central energy plant. So the overall size grew, but the elementary, as you might recall, we took some square footage from there, we took some square footage from the high school. But the net effect was our project grew. Not significant in terms of the fee structure, et cetera, et cetera. I didn't put the dollar here, but it's probably maybe ten thousand dollars plus or minus in fee. But if they applied the hard cost, times the square footage, times their fee, there'd be a, there'd be a. they applied the hard cost, times the square footage, times their fee, there'd be a dollar value there. If we had just done a 575 square foot building, they probably would have gotten about 20 grand for that building, because again, small projects have a higher fee or percentage than bigger projects. So that was the second factor. We actually changed square footage against that original contract information. The third one is varied in terms of their services. So what deliverables or services are they providing? And the contract has very specific language that says during construction, and they have talked about it before, every single thing you see in here, the ceiling tile, the floor carpet, the wallpaper, the drywall, the paint, has what's called a submittal. The architect designs it, says, here's what I want. The contractor says, basically almost like a cut sheet, says, are you sure this is what you want? This is what I'm going to provide. He has onus to review that two times. We had multiple times, unfortunately, where the contractors just weren't quite giving the right information, and so he had additional effort that he was tracking, and that equated to a potential fee, if you will. That fee I'm going to share, because the intention was we were going to pass that straight on to the contractors, VSWC as part of the fee negotiation said, well, I'm happy to absorb that, if you will, and then we as a district are not looking to pass that on to Gilbane, if you will, because that was a direct correlation of their inability to in a timely fashion deliver those submittals. So that's really additional services that were caused by the contractors, but as we are the hiring agent of the architect, his only recourse is to come to us. He has no channel to the contractors to ask for money. So again, the three big things that caused in terms of contract information changes were cost, that's the biggest, square feet, we grew a little bit, and then some of the services are deliverables. There's a fourth one I didn't add, I'll share, I mentioned it earlier, and this is a lot of information. Again, the contract laid out that there would be four GMP packages. We ended up with seven, and so there was a little more effort there. I didn't put it there, that's a little harder to quantify, but again, that was a fourth change, if you will, in terms of what the contract had anticipated versus what the project ultimately delivered and asked the architect to do. So we started out with well in excess of a half million. Where are we landing today? Cut to the chase. We went through, this started actually back in August. Went back and forth multiple, multiple times. Chris can attest to letters, emails, discussion. And where we've landed is the 191.550. Now, how did we get to that? It was actually 200 grand. He's crediting back that 8,500, if you will, for the submittal review, item three, B, or B3. So he's giving us that credit. I didn't put all that in the weeds, but basically we're at 191.5. But also, my discussion with Chris was, hey, we've got some additional needs here in the district. We're looking at renovating the current high school. We need some documentation to solicit pricing, whether it's for carpet, et cetera, et cetera. Is there any way you can help us out with that? Can we get, can we buy something tangible, if you will, to use my words with this fee amendment? So he did have additional effort. There are ramifications to the increased cost, but I was also trying to get us an additional service, if you will. Done that many times, we'll package, hey, we've got something downstream. It's usually a little even more palatable to say, we're going to give you more fee, but we're also getting additional future benefit. This is all for past benefit. That's really what Chris is requesting. But I'm adding in the request that he assist us in the existing high school. And so we formulated a projected amount of time, about 160 person hours, if you will. That is still not completely scripted out, it's really just a placeholder. As we continue to move forward with reviewing what's necessary for that high school, and really in the next couple of months, it's very timely, this is the opportunity to implement and use those out there. So there is some future benefit baked into the model, if you will. So I'm going to stop there. There was a lot of data, a lot of information to say, we started at a little over half million, we've landed at 191.5 with some future benefit for the existing high school. And I should note, again, the original contract, as well as this contract recommendation, we're all done in concert with the districts or the boards' contract negotiator, ultimately Bricker and Eckler, who was at the table originally, both in developing the, at least an AAA contract, but in completing the contract, helping the district negotiate. Just to share, I was involved in the very last day I got hired, having to put my notice in, and I was on the call with Chris the next day with Angie negotiating the final fee. So I did participate in one fee meeting through phone secretly at my former employer's office just to share, and they know that funny story. No, I have to share, I think it's hilarious. But anyways, Bricker and Eckler was also part of this. So even though it was predominantly myself and Chris, and then I brought in Angie and Jeremy as we got closer and closer to try to talk through the fact pattern, Bricker and Eckler was also part of the process in terms of, okay, what's, we started at 500,000 plus, what is the background? What changed? What is the effort? What is the value? What is the benefit? Let's get to something that's fair and equitable, and that's really ultimately how we came up with the 191. So I'm going to stop there for a second and see what questions you have, then we'll bring Chris to come and talk about, because we also want to reconcile his contract and remove things he's not doing, which makes this a little more complicated. So first, let's talk about the amendment number two and see what questions you have.
I guess one thing, just to draw out for the board, between you and Jeremy, maybe on this one, what does this look like? And I know it gets complicated with the next part, but where's this money? It's probably a question that I would guess people have as we're looking at a tight project. How does that work?
So it does come out of project funds, and remember, project funds include the original bond fund, then any interest. As envisioned, this would be soft contingency or soft cost, and the discussion with Jeremy is this would be basically outside of the original project contingency, which we're at about 400,000 right now just to share, that this would be from the interest pile that we have. Because ultimately, it is an add, if you will, you know, I keep saying, there's a deduct, there's a deduct. We are adding money to his contract, we're not, we're reducing that deduction or that credit we're about to get that we're going to talk about in a second. So it would come out of the interest side of the bond issue, not the original. You won't see it as currently proposed, you won't see it on the contingency log as a deduct to that exercise.
When we've talked about using that interest for other things over the course of time, where are we at with that number?
We have banked about three and a half million dollars in interest. And if I'm recalling correctly, I think we've already applied maybe about, I don't know, a million or somewhere around that for the athletics. So there are funds there, it's just always that reminder that we're hopefully be able to use some of that too for the high school renovation, but there are still funds available.
But that's probably one of the most important.
Funds to the tune of about two and a half million dollars, using those rough calculations that would incorporate or encompass this conversation.
Correct.
Thank you.
And so the way we've paid for that delta, the change in scope of the projected interest, as well as the savings or deductions, because they're actually quite sizable for a couple of line items in Chris's contract, those have actually, we've already baked those into the contract award or funding model. This exercise would simply contractually find him, move it formally over there. We've done kind of a pencil transfer, if you will, to say, we're balanced, they will award the contracts. This exercise would physically recognize, contractually, and alter his contract to physically move that money over to the good, if you will. But as a project, just to remind you, with multiple exercises, we've already assumed that credit that we're about to get from his contract in the model, they'll award the contracts and keep going. So there won't be an influx of cash, it's just a paper transfer this time. Anything else? And I'll bring Chris up, we'll kind of walk through what supplemental services are we looking to not do, many of which we've talked about in the past, and then just kind of get to that final number and see what questions you have there at all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm going to go over this sheet, which is the exhibit C. It's called exhibit C because it was actually the base version, this was an exhibit to our agreement. And as Doug mentioned, the architect's fees are generally calculated as a base on percentage of construction cost. So we had basic services that were based on the percentage, and that was the 6.65%, 6.75%. We also had supplemental services, most of which were optional, that are outside that fee, and so we had listed those services. A number of those services were used on this project and a number of them were not. The ones that were not used and that we don't anticipate using need to be backed out of my fee, obviously, they were optional and I don't get paid for them if they're not used. So this document here reconciles those services, and I'll go through them each briefly, and then it also incorporates the two amendments, the one that has already been approved, and then the one that we're talking about today. So this document differs from the original one in that I added a column to the right, which is the revised fee, the column to the, second from the right was in there in the previous version. Previous version totaled up to the 8.15 million dollars at the bottom, and the new total is a 7.3, which, as Doug mentioned, is a reduction but incorporates the adds. So the big things that are backed out, if you look under supplemental services, the first line item was the storm shelter design. That was when we were hired originally, the state of Ohio required schools to incorporate storm shelter designs into their projects. There was some conversation about that potentially changing, so we identified the design fee associated with that as optional. The law changed, and the board decided not to incorporate that special design, so those services were never expended, so that $60,000 fee is zeroed out in the right-hand column. If you go down several line items to optional expanded HVAC control services, this is a, an optional way of doing the controls for the mechanical systems that involves more services by the mechanical engineer than is the typical way of doing it. We've done this on a previous project, and so we put the value of the services in there for discussion. We had extensive discussion about it. The district opted not to go that direction, so those services, the $725,000 optional services were never expended, so that gets credit out of my fee. And just so you know, that had that been accepted, the cost of the controls that were in the contract would have been less, so that would have been offset, but it was not purchased through my engineer, it was purchased otherwise, so that gets credited back out. The very next one is optional commissioning services. Typically, commissioning services for a building are done by a third-party engineer. They can be done in some cases by the engineer of record, and so we included a cost in there if the district wanted to use the engineer of record to do that. The district opted not to and has since contracted with another company to do controls or commissioning, so that $250,000 is credited out to zero. And then the final one on that list is the optional deep foundation design. That is put in there because when we were starting the project, we did not know the soil conditions of the site, and if deep foundations were required, there's additional design fees that are incurred, so we had a line on it for that. As it turned out, we did not need to do deep foundations, so that did not need to be used. That's zeroed out. So that takes the subtotal in the supplemental services down from the 1.93, 993 million to 933,000. That's the biggest deduct. Under the reimbursables, those stay the same. Those reimbursable expenses have turned out to be very accurate. We're going to, we're on track to operate within those, but be very close to extending those. And then at the very bottom, the two in the blue are the amendments, the added drive, 12,660, which is already approved, and then the one today for the expanded scope budget is 191.550. Those added on, bringing the revised total to the 7, 295,336. So that total brings my contract up to date, including the two amendments, but also zeroing out the additional optional supplemental services that were not used. Again, a lot of words. Any questions on how we got there or questions on anything else?
I just have a clarification for Jeremy. As we're talking about that extra money that we had with the interest, we also did take some of the commissioning out of their contract. So I know we have a credit back here, but just to remind the board that we did pay for some of that out of our additional, that 3.5 million as well.
And that was the, we approved that at the, one of those, the second of those two at the last board meeting, correct?
Yes. In terms of the 250, I know it was a little confusing. We knew we were getting 250 back from the architect. As a project, we only accepted the credit for the construct, we already accepted that money, 200 grand, so we reserved 50 for commissioning. That was the first peruer contract. Their amendment for 70, though, the amount of contingency was the discussion when that was awarded. So the 250 is not all available, only 50 of it was available for commissioning. The other 200s are even credited, we keep calling it a paper transfer, I'm sure it loves that line.
I remember that.
Over here for construction. So we only had 50 for peruer, hopefully they were about 120, versus the original 250.
Only 70 out of that, but I just wanted to note that for you, we were talking about that interest money.
So again, the goal is, we've co-mangled, sorry, Chris, we've co-mangled again, because the thought was, we've been wanting to do this reconciliation. Typically, you do it at the end or near the end of the project, however there are any issues. Doug's not here, so I'm going to ask Doug's question for him, if he's listening. I know what Mr. Crowe would probably ask is, there's another benchmark. So it's all, all these things change. What did the owner do per se? What did we change in our documentation? The architect's entitled to ask. Are there any cards we have besides, are they doing their job? Are they providing good services? What other things can we do in this negotiation, if you will? Another item, which was actually not a negative, is what's called air and omissions. So we talk about the change order along a lot. What changes on there are driven by things the district may want versus the building department versus unknowns on the site, something underground, or, to be blunt, mistakes by the architect engineer. Those are called errors and omissions. There's a standard of care, Mr. Crowe actually asked me that the other day, Chris was hired, probably my day 30 here. I've now been here three years, and I'll never forget it, but it's a very logical question. He said, he asked, Chris, what is your, what is your standard of care relative to errors and omission? One, the 2% is excellent, three is kind of the top threshold. We are at around a half a percent. That meaning, the cost we're expending as a district of our contingency for errors, if you will, and omissions by the architect engineering team is at 0.5 at this time. Again, we're not completely done. Most of our unknowns should be out the door, but when Chris got to tallying that up, that's approximately where we are. It was actually a little less on the elementary, but as an aggregate, we're at about 0.5. The industry standard is you want to try and be under 2%. Three is kind of a fat threshold. We're at 0.5, just to share.
And can you state again, when do typical errors and omission occur? Do they occur early on in a project, midway through, towards the end?
They occur throughout the life. So again, we still have, that's why usually this reconciliation exercise, a lot of times, and fee amendments, we try to do as late as we can, so that way our risk through the architect is as minimal as possible. The risk on both sides is as minimal as possible. There's no, as far as, as far as we can forecast, both parties should be fine moving forward. But we do have a little baked into their contract, like Chris said, there's still some line items that we've got a few thousand here and there that we're tracking that are extra, if you will, so we'll still have a few dollars hopefully coming back to us. We're not zeroing everything out. We're keeping things that are basically allowances and other things going, that way we've still got some tools should something happen moving forward. So they happen through the life of the project, I guess would be my answer, but typically they're, they happen predominantly during construction, and bigger ones tend to happen in the first six, first 50% of construction.
So we shouldn't assume that there'll be a two and a half percent down, and you're just celebrating the 5% now? Or, I'm sorry, half, 0.5.
Yeah, half a percent, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So B2, B3 make all the sense in the world to me. B1, and maybe you said this and I just missed it, but how does that, how does the, how does a change in, let's say, the cost of lumber or steel, right, which, going back through, being through that history, even the folks I work with in the trades, nobody was predicting that spike, right? So that, in my mind, this isn't a finger pointing exercise, right? But can you talk about how the architect's effort changes just because the price tag changes of a particular item?
The biggest differential is really in that BE exercise is the starting point. They have to do, go to the nth degree and have additional effort to try and save money. So we had multiple times we would vet through, that's one case where we were trying to, because we as a district said we're not changing some of these given, size of the building, number of kids, one site, we had no wiggle room to adjust the money over here. We had to adjust it within the scope of the building, if you will, within materials selected, the fabrication of the building, et cetera. So what it does when we go through that value engineering, it causes them to have to do more exercises, think out of the box. Not that they're not already, but now we're doing it multiple times. Maybe they did the initial design, we vetted it once. We were tending to have to vet things two and three times to try and get things back to where it was an awardable dollar amount. So that's probably the biggest thing I would say as a starting point. Chris, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, and I guess when you phrase it that way, to me, that reads different than changes in hard costs, right?
Well, it's correct.
If you said to me, hey, changes in hard costs necessitated far more than anticipated value of engineering exercises, that would have, that clicks with me and I could now draw a line and be doing it too.
No problem.
So that was really the root of my question, it was not that, I mean, I knew there was, I didn't figure Chris was just like, hey, this ought to be fun, let me, you know what I mean? But like, I just was having a hard time drawing the line for myself.
I think it'd be helpful too, maybe if we could add that in, just sort of this historical document, approving it. Because I agree, that's a whole different approach than this lumber one-up.
Yeah, this is just a kind of a black and white thing, it doesn't, you're right, it does not exactly explain what the relating benefit or result was to the owner or cause and effect of the architect, you're correct.
Just for the board or even in the future, if we need to look back and be able to explain that, it'd be helpful?
The other thing that I would add is that the, the square footage of the, of the buildings is, is one metric of scope. But the scope is comprehensive, so there's, site work is part of the scope. And so the, you know, the quantity of paving and site amenities and the athletic, the whole athletic scope, most of that is not square footage. And so part of it is the athletic storage buildings and that wasn't, that wasn't defined at all, so in, in the original scope. And we wound up building a big athletic storage building, but so, uh, yeah.
Don't make it sound too bad.
Also the concessions building and so forth, anyway, so there's, there's, there's a, a total scope. If the increased budget were strictly due to directly increased scope, so if it, if that, the total eight million dollars that was increased was eight million dollars worth of square footage, then the total value of that, you know, that five hundred thousand would, would be completely justified. Part of the reason why I think it is fair for us to negotiate and to be at someplace much less than that, you know, almost a third of that, is because I do think a part of that, a good part of that was inflation. And I don't think that just because things are a little bit more expensive, there's additional cost to me. But it wasn't exclusively that, it was a combination. And so the part of it that is actually increased scope, more stuff that I had to design specify, oversee construction, that's where we tried to get to, you know, what's, what's the reasonable value of that.
And to clarify, I didn't feel that way, but the way it read made me go, okay, so that's why I asked the question. So I appreciate you guys explaining it that way, because that helps clarify for that, a lot for me, a lot more for Chris, thank you.
Any other questions for Doug or Chris?
So again, the intention is we would come back next week to the resolution. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I believe that is all that I have today.
Treasurer's report.
No, I have it on my phone, but masks don't allow face ID to hack that top up as quick as we normally would, so. All right, so that brings us to the treasurer's report. Jeremy, have you got anything more to?
I don't have anything significant that can't wait until next week, so we just will wait until next week.
Which would bring us then to board member items of interest, and I guess I'll just open the floor and sort of work in the way around, does anybody have anything you'd like to share with that? All right, so item ten then would be public participation. This is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not considered a public community meeting. This is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda, please see reference criteria. I don't see any members of the public that I think are here comment. Did we get anything submitted offline?
No.
All right, and that would bring us to item eleven. It's recommended the board approve the agreement between the Big Walnut Local School District Board of Education and Northern Columbus Athletic Association, Ohio Not-for-Profit Corporation, to establish rules and protocols for use of certain district facilities by the NCAA, coordinated with districts. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Are you going to have Brian talk to this or?
Yeah, I think we have Brian and Doug, I don't know if you want to come to this as well, and if you want to bring Phillip as well, whichever. Obviously, I know we've talked about this previously and want to thank these gentlemen, as well as Jeremy has spent a lot of time on the contract language and trying to make sure that we're addressing all the concerns that board members have, concerns we have, to make sure that this is an agreement that works for everybody and is a win-win. So with that, do you want to share kind of some of the changes and things that we've added? And then we can get any questions that you have as board members?
Thanks, Angie, and first, again, just to agree with what Angie said there, agree to, thank you to the board for all your questions, your input. Thank you to our leadership team, thank you to our attorneys, and thanks to Phil here for his willingness to sit at the table and relook at some things. So we feel like we've put a good place, a good plan in place, that's going to build a quality turf field for all of our kids to use. I think we've answered all the questions that were, that were asked of us, I don't forget about that. I do have the turf maintenance care plan B in front of me, but I'll walk around and give that to you if you don't get a look at that. That would be the B part of the, of the contract. It's an all-encompass care plan and as I've talked to other schools about daily maintenance of turf fields, it is an all-in process. So all in from the standpoint of the teams that are using it, the coaches that are using it, the athletic director, our site managers. It is an all-in process of evaluation. At the end of the day, when you have something that nice, you have to take care of it. It's like buying a new car, you've got, you've got to have daily maintenance, you've got to take care of it, and know it'll work the last as long as possible. So there is a plan in place here, if there's, if someone sees a tear in the field, if there's gum on the field, if there's debris that needs to get removed, there's a, a maintenance plan here to help communicate that. And ultimately, that would be my responsibility as athletic, athletic director, to oversee that for all four turf fields, not just the NCAA. I'm going to walk around and show this to the board. And he wasn't doing better, but then, I was just saying, I'm walking around to track me, last name.
You were just saying earlier, what a beautiful week for spring sports, though, right?
Thank you.
You were excited to have them out there again.
Phillip, do you want to, you want to add anything?
I'll think, everything, again, good to be back and thank you for the opportunity to hopefully partner with you and bring some additional recreational, quality recreational facilities to the area.
Any questions for either of them?
So help me out process-wise. There's a time where neither of the entities are using it, we decide to rent it out. Somebody drops a whole huge wad of gum that gums up the field literally. I could see kind of either of the conditions for use, so like how, like who enforces that? And what kind of liability comes back to the entity that's leasing the field at that particular time? So that we're not stuck completely with the, the cost of maintaining the, the damage may be done by another organization?
There are, there are facility use agreements, as we update that for all the fields, if there's damage done to the field that has, there was a cost to it. That's not covered as part of our warrant, they would have to incur their cost. But that would be part of our facility agreement, that will get updated as the new fields at the high school come on board.
So would that also entail then requiring those folks to have a certificate of insurance in order to be able to use?
And that's current practice.
But to that end, that was going to be my question, which is, and Brian, I do want to say, Mr. Sheldon, I do want to say thank you for the due diligence and the communication in terms of you and the NCAA for this project, based on all of the questions we have asked on. But the one thing that can't be addressed in this is the update to our policies, the update to our practices based on this additional asset, if you will, in the district, potential asset, if you will, in the district. And I'm wondering what the timeline or, or opportunity for that is, when that might come in front of us in terms of an updated facility use agreement or protocol and practice like that?
Currently still collecting data from other schools, right now I think I've collected data from about fourteen different schools. We've got a template put in place, and I would think by the end of spring here, we should be able to bring something to the board.
I'm going to say summer.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
Let's say summer, that was our original target, and I know we talked about Mark being really involved with that with, as well as with Brian and Jeremy and I'm sure Uncle Joe Rucker and as well at the middle school. But that was kind of our target, was to really sit down and work on that this summer, so that going into the next school year, we have something in place. And we can share that with you over the summer, but not this spring.
Yeah, that's a really good question. A big piece of that is coming up with a fair and equitable rental rate fee, because it's going to be a significant increase from what we charge now. So as I'm collecting data from other schools, that rate, that fee rate varies greatly. Some schools have a pretty high rate, some schools have a much lower rate. We've got to find out what works best for our community, and that's going to take some time.
And, and then on the other side of that same coin, it's going to take some, which was part of my initial round of questions also, some significant communication to those entities. Because I'm certain that they'll be charging their league fees or whatever like that come July. And if there's going to be an increase on our end, we'll need to communicate that well. And again, kind of celebrate, if you will, this partnership should it go through because of its uniqueness and the cost benefit to the district, where there is really, on the, on the taxpayer side, zero cost and all benefit. I certainly want to see that get communicated loudly as we're trying to be stewards of resources.
We can briefly talk about the timeline again as well, right now we're.
It'll be done by fall, that's what I heard.
If there's no, no more delays, you know, if we have another delay in the next couple of weeks here, then obviously we would have to move the project. We're very well prepared to move this project to after the end of the fall season. We're very well prepared to make that happen if there's another delay.
I think a big thing to talk about with the rental fees, and we have already talked about, we're due to just look at every facility and get all those in alignment. So certainly that will have an impact as we look at some of our other youth programs, yeah. But the big one with this is we don't really have a lot of people renting this field right now, do we?
No.
So it's not going to be like, hey, we're relying on this as a grass field and here was the price and now you've significantly increased it. So that'll help at least from that standpoint. And then as we start getting into, you know, we've talked about our, our youth football leagues, our youth soccer leagues, being able to use the current middle school field and rent that across different organizations, that'll still be grass. So we would anticipate a different rate for that grass field versus our turf field. So we'll have some, I hope, hopefully it won't be that big of a, I guess, transition because nobody's really paying a grass rate for that build now.
And I was just, I was just going to add to that, just as some people have asked me about this project and the community and just turf in general. I mean, that's one of the things that I've been trying to set the stage for folks and just saying like, hey, this is going to be different than how we've done things. And I've really had nobody push back on that. I agree with Steve, we've got to be crystal clear about what that means and what it looks like. But I get the sense, at least in the community, that they understand that, that this makes sense and that it's something they understand that, you know, they would expect that they're going to be paying maybe a little bit more or even paying for the first time, depending on whatever they've been used to in the past. But I am, I'm a thousand percent with Steve, the more we get that word out earlier and clarify on September first, is that right? Or are we talking about actual, are we talking like Equinox Fall or are we talking like?
In school world, right? Well, and I, if this is approved, then I would be looking at even a May Eagle Examiner article where we can share what the plan is, how it's going to be funded. I think that would be good to get out and just to kind of start laying that groundwork, to be able to communicate more as the summer progresses.
And I was, I was going to add then too, I know that as part of the rental rate and the facility use and all of those pieces, we'll be looking at setting aside those funds as well to replace in the future, looking at what that plan looks like on, what, what portion first goes to the field replacement and then at what point, if we feel like we're covering that on an annual basis, what then could maybe be shared of those rentals to, to help that athletic department as a whole. So that will be another piece that we'll be looking at as we are looking at that facility's use and rental rates.
I have, number one, thank you for providing, I think, a more clear understanding in this agreement. And I know I had a lot of questions at the last meeting. And in no way was that, that, you know, I was against this project, but just really needed some clarification. And I feel like this document does that a lot better. So thank you guys for your work on this. And I spoke to Jeremy yesterday, and one of the things that he and I talked about, and I guess I feel like it's kind of important for him to address it here, just so we all recognize what's happening in four C, that the NCAA agrees to pay standard non-rental fees. And we were kind of talking about just the fact that the use of the facility and ultimately the, the personnel used to clean up the restrooms and things like that, I think, comes back to the district. And Jeremy kind of gave me a better picture of what that is a real cost to the district. And I guess I just felt like that, if it hadn't been shared, I feel like that's kind of important to share.
So as Leanne and I were talking, understanding that right now, we're, what we're looking at is somewhat speculation on trying to put numbers of how, how is the field going to be used, when is it going to be used? But what we, we tried to put together though is just rough numbers of if it is being used for the youth recreation program, what approximately then are those costs to the district? And what it looks like in a, the use, pardon me. We'll, we'll say a average use in, in talking with Phil and his organization would be approximately a eight-week season, both in the fall and in the spring. And we'll say approximately two days out of, whether that's during the weeknight or on two weekend days. About four dot, four hours each day. And, and with that, looking at what a, a average custodial rate would, would be, we're looking at maybe about ten thousand dollars a year would be what we would pay for having a custodian on-site to be monitoring that situation. So that's, so about ten thousand a year for the twelve-year period that we're looking at. But there's also the benefit to our students of having this field to not have to cancel events. And so there's, there's a cost benefit on both sides of it. And what we've also looked at as well is that we don't necessarily have to have a custodian on-site. There could be other options that we could do, whether it be a shared responsibility between a coach or a volunteer or we could, we could look at other ways if we felt like we needed somebody on-site to be able to do that, so.
I don't want to nitpick or get into the weeds at all on that topic, but we also have facility managers as well, right?
Correct, we do have facility managers.
And that's a supplemental, so that wouldn't be, okay.
And that could be another thing that we could look at.
Anybody else with questions or comments?
I guess just to Steve's point that he brought up, that we'll be ready to go in the fall for a first football game. And if not, changes will be made, yes.
No, no pressure.
Well, I think it's also important, and to that end, you did your due diligence in terms of communication with staff and the football coach and so forth, and this is actually something that they're interested in as well. Thank you.
If there's anything else?
Okay, Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dors?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to item twelve.
Thank, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. Just locked in on the, schedule the next board meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be formally known as tax day, April fifteenth, six thirty PM, right here at the administrative office. And we will still be streaming. Item thirteen-one, it's executive session. It's recommended the board enter executive session to consider the employment appointment of a public employee official, consider investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee official, licensee or student, and to discuss confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions regarding requests for economic development assistance. Can I have a motion, please?
Come in.
Thanks, Sheri, is there a second?
Second.
Steve, Jeremy, when you are ready.
Mrs. Dors?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Do not anticipate any, taking any action coming out of executive session, so if you've been following us at home, appreciate you staying in with us and we'll see you Thursday.